Good evening. Welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township. This is September 7th, 2023. Please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission members present this evening, we have Ms. Hugo, Mr. Andre, Colter, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Yellings, Mr. Yacho, Mr. Hoffman, and Mr. Bush. Our planning and zoning administrator, Mr. Jeremy Siff, and our consultant, Mr. Ah.
Yep.
Close enough.
Close enough. Okay, good. Few changes to the agenda, I understand, we might have?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a discussion point either under new business or committee reports, however you see fit. We need to discuss changing the October and the November meetings. The October ones due to the MAP conference that we won't have a quorum that night, so some of us on this panel tonight won't be here. So we need to move that to the 12th. And then the November 2nd meeting, we need to change to the following week on the 9th due to early voting.
Put it under committee reports.
Okay, just put it right by, right in the middle of deer season.
Okay, we're gonna have some discussions regarding the October, November meetings under committee reports. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, none?
Move for approval as amended.
Motion by Mr. Bush to approve the agenda as amended, support by Ms. Hugo. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight zero. Approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes to approve, July 6th, 2023 minutes. Any changes?
Handle them both at once?
Separate, please.
Mr. Chairman, I've looked at the minutes from July 6th and find them to be correct. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve those minutes.
The only comment I want to make is make sure that Mr. Hoffman doesn't get paid twice for having his name on the ends list twice, that's all.
I do do twice the work, so.
That is true. No changes? Motion by Mr. Yacho to approve the minutes as presented for July 6th. Support for that is by?
Support.
Mr. Bush. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight zero. All right, on to the August 17th meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, just so that's, everybody's aware, that was the special meeting, the August, early in August meeting, we canceled due to lack of a quorum.
Changes to these?
I haven't found any changes. I'd like to make a motion to approve these minutes for the August 17th meeting, special meeting.
As presented, support by Ms. Hugo. Vote is in order, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight zero. Okay, got that out of the way. Public comment. This would be an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission for any items that we do not have a public hearing. We do have two public hearings this evening. One with, if you're here, regarding the neighborhood commercial district or the text amendment for the light industrial, we will have a public hearing for each of those. But if you'd like to address the Planning Commission, anything outside of that now would be the time.
No, I just heard from Grand Blank Grid, a board member from the Grand Blank Grid, and we wanted to see what the issues that are coming up from the planning commission. So I was going to sit and listen in. Did you say this was a public meeting?
No. No, it's a public meeting. But you only have one opportunity to speak about things, general topics.
All right, we will close the public comment portion, bring it back to the Planning Commission. Correspondence, the other thing we've got is regarding the items that are on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Um, let's see, no, old business.
None.
New business, zoning case 674I, text amendment to neighborhood commercial. Public hearing, who's gonna lead us in this one?
Yep, good. So this was in our zoning ordinance, under general commercial. It talks about, under the permitted uses and under the special land uses. Part of it talks about all uses listed as principal permitted uses in the office service professional and the neighborhood commercial district is allowed as a principal permitted use and the same adage is in the special land use. What we're requesting with this public hearing is to also do the same thing under neighborhood commercial and basically add the same adage that says anything in the two lower professional office and office service district be allowed as permitted, permitted uses, principal permitted uses and special land uses and having the same type of language added under neighborhood commercial.
Just trying to claim things up. What's different? Mr. Bush, do you have something?
I was just asking, Jeremy, it's nothing noted in red to where the change was. So I was just wondering where? We added this.
It was, if you look under the public hearing portion, the last two pages, that's basically explaining what's gonna be added. There was no changes to the neighborhood commercial district that looks like it, the pages in your book.
Yeah, for the cut sheets, we haven't, we haven't amended those as the clear zoning graphic cut sheets look like. Those are just the old existing text.
Yep, basically just showing what's allowed in.
Thank you.
O S and P O.
Thank you.
Yep. It's a minor change, it wasn't anything that was, we did have an applicant that was questioning it and wanted to see it, and I had brought this up to Jill when I first got here a couple of years ago and said that the intent was that it was to be there anyways, but if it's in general commercial, I wanted to see it in N C. She agreed that it, the intent was there, but now that we have this applicant that wants to see it in black and white, this is kind of where the push is now to have it completed.
These need to go to the township board?
Yeah, the recommendation should be to the township board, yes.
Any discussion before we go to the public? All right, we'll open up to the public if anyone would like to address the Planning Commission on this text amendment change, neighborhood commercial, now would be the time. Doesn't look like anyone else. Bring it back up to the Planning Commission, any further discussion? Sounds like we need a motion to move this up to the township board for approval as presented. Anyone like to make that motion?
Mr. Chair, I would make a recommendation to approve zoning case 674, text amendments neighborhood commercial, recommend to the township board for approval.
Motion by Mr. Bush to move this up to the township board for approval, support by Mr. Yacho. All right, any other discussion?
Just to be clear, can we amend that to say 674I? They're all 674, we've just been, as we do them, just, just for the record, I know that's your intent, but I just want that to be noted.
That's fine.
Do we want to vote on this?
Sure.
All right, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight zero. All right, next is zoning case 674J, light industrial.
All right, good evening, Planning Commission, I'm happy to just quickly discuss this. Again, we went over this briefly last meeting to set the public hearing for tonight, but the change here would be to amend the I-1 light industrial district height to a maximum of 75 feet when within 500 feet of the I-75 right-of-way and no less than 150 feet from residentially zoned property. So it's just, really the purpose there is to match the Tech Village Park zoning district, which is in close proximity generally to the I-1 district, and it's really to have consistency across the board there in that geographic region.
Just a general question, let's say we hit a parcel's I-1, it's near the freeway, there is a residential piece of property next door, does that mean you couldn't have it or the portion of the building that's at least 100 and?
So it's gotta be within 500 feet of the freeway and outside of the 150, has we set back at least 150?
150 from the residentially zoned properties line.
To that portion or the building, not to the zoning district?
Right, so building to? I believe so, it's, yep, it's for the building, building to the lot line or building to right-of-way line. Yep. I believe that's how the measurement is connected, right, Jeremy?
So we look at the building to the lot line?
Yep.
So the I-1 building to the lot?
Trying to make sure we weren't excluding something that we?
Yes, no, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, questions?
Real quick question, how many properties does this affect?
So as of right now, one, the new plastic omnium in Enterprise Park, and then we don't know how many parcels are gonna be in Tech Village just yet, we're still waiting on a master plan for that. There could be five, 10, 12, just depends on what they bring through and what they decide to split that up into. So I'm guessing anywhere from five to 12 tops of what this could be affected by. Okay, thank you.
All right, we need to have a public hearing on this one as well.
Yes.
So we will open up the public hearing, anyone present that would like to address Planning Commission on text amendment for allowable height change to 75 feet, now would be the time. See anyone that's interested in speaking up? So we will close the public hearing, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. Does anyone have any other comments, discussion, like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve zoning case 674J to, regarding the light industrial height change, and we would recommend that to the township board for approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Yacho to send zoning case 674J up to the township board for all approval, support for that by?
Support.
I saw it in the first, I'm sorry. By Ms. Hugo, the motion by Yacho, support, or support by Hugo. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight zero. All right, we've got a zoning case, general zoning case 674. Amendment discussion.
Yeah, so this one, if we decide to move forward to a public hearing on this one, this one will be 674K.
Yep, all right, well, I'm happy to go ahead and introduce this idea to the Planning Commission, but similar to the last item, we're looking at just increasing a little bit of a dimension, close to, generally close to the, I believe towards the freeway, but also for DDA properties is what we're looking for. We're looking to see your thoughts on increasing sign sizes in DDA properties, in non-residential districts. Right now, the text, right now, the ordinance allows for some flexibility when you're within 300 feet of I-75 and when you're within an industrial zone property. In those cases, you can go up to 150 square feet of sign area and, I believe, 10 foot tall of sign height. And essentially what we're doing here is we're just wondering if there is any, if the Planning Commission has any thoughts towards the potential of increasing DDA district sign sizes to, up to 150 square feet and up to 10 feet in height. We have a couple ideas here, Jeremy and I have discussed, and one of those, one of our biggest concerns is for multi-tenant properties who are looking to share front, essentially a monument sign that gives some direction, gives some idea of any businesses that are in a business park or in a, in an industrial park that are kind of having to share some frontage space. That's really, that's really our biggest concern and one of our concerns we see in different communities is there's always kind of a, not a fight, but there's always a, a passion to have that first property in an industrial park because you have a bit more signage, and if you're, if you're towards the rear of such a park, you might not get a whole lot of publicity from the roads. So that's kind of our point in, at, wondering how you feel about this amendment, Jeremy?
Yeah, this was something that Superintendent Lema and I discussed, just giving some more flexibility to certain areas in the township, predominantly of this DDA district. We've changed the zoning, we've changed the future land use map, this is kind of just coming in along with that same notion that we're going to give them a little more flexibility because we know there's gonna be a combination of properties, there's gonna be limited frontage, limited access, limited ingress egress. In order to have some of these bigger properties, you're gonna have multi-tenant, multi-building parcels, trying to keep the number of signs down. This is kind of to eliminate some of that, so you only get one sign for the whole parcel district, sorry, one sign for the parcel, we're giving you more space to put so you don't end up with the same issue that Mr. Amat just described.
You mentioned DDA, is the size for the sign different outside of the DDA area?
If approved today, yes. As it stands today, no. The DDA has no separate entity for any kind of relaxed zoning for anything at this point. This is kind of one of those steps to give them some relief.
Right now, the monument sign, the way the ordinance is written addresses that no matter where you're at.
Except for if you are within 300 feet of I-75, then you get to eight feet instead of six. Basically, anybody that their rear sign would be given a little more leeway, not their, well, their front side would be allowed to have too, so, yes. So this gives everybody in the DDA district, not anybody that just is along I-75, some relief.
So this doesn't apply, wouldn't apply everywhere in the township?
Just the DDA district.
Okay.
The DDA district is predominantly Baldwin and Holly Road, over by 75.
Any comments from Planning Commission members?
Yes.
Mr. Yacho?
Some of the properties along Baldwin Road between Enterprise Park and Saginaw Street are fairly small pieces of property. Would those properties be allowed to have these, this type of large sign?
So we're still kind of gathering ideas on how we want to write the potential amendment. I think you raise a good point in that, you know, we do, maybe we want to have a threshold for size of parcel or size of frontage in order to get to that, you know, 10 foot tall, 150 square foot sign, because, I mean?
If you're one building and you've only got a frontage, is it really necessary?
Right. Yeah, I think it could lead to clutter having, allowing for that big of a sign for, you know, 50 by 100 foot, small business parcel. I mean, that's a really small parcel, but, you know, 100 by 250.
Mr. Bush? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I guess, just a comment, over the years, it seems like the Planning Commission and the board has done their best to try to make signs smaller. I know it's been a long time since I was on this board before and then on the township board, and now we're talking about making them bigger. I just worry about the ramifications of other districts and other businesses when we start allowing larger signs for certain people, and then other people are gonna say, well, you wouldn't let it for me. And I understand there's a difference in a zoning district, but that still doesn't mean they're not gonna be upset and come beating on our door because we let someone have a bigger sign.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Bush's comment. Couple things, one, I think, I like to keep things simple, and I think, you know, if we're gonna have different heights for different districts, it's gonna complicate the zoning ordinance and having us justify why do we have it higher here than some other district. The other, another concern that I have is, I mean, we have to draw the line somewhere on these height things, and it seems to me that 10 feet is, or I'm sorry, 8 feet is reasonable. And also, I mean, in this day and age with everybody using, if you're unfamiliar with an area and you're looking for a particular building or a particular business or whatever, you use your navigation apps to find it. I mean, it's not as important to have a sign to help people who are looking for a particular business or entity or whatever, so I'm not sure, I mean, I don't see that this is a problem in having the current height limits that we have in the zoning ordinance, I don't see any real need to change them, so why do we want to change them?
Well, this is kind of in lieu of, if we don't, what's gonna happen is we're trying to get ahead of things, because if we, I already know there's already a client waiting in the wings, it's gonna be putting up, that wants to do this 10 foot, and that's not the only reason, but they're not gonna be the only one. So this is to get ahead of variances that are gonna be coming, because as soon as we, if we allow one, then the rest of them are gonna be allowed. Now, we've already talked about not changing the sign ordinance elsewhere, not allowing for the digital signage and things like that. We're trying to give a little, to get a little, that is, I guess, is my point, is if we allow the height, but you're not allowing for the digital signage, and, you know, in certain areas, we're, you gotta, you gotta be able to give little in certain areas for multi-tenant buildings, and I don't know if that, if that's where this needs to go and that verbiage needs to be put in there, but there needs to be some allowance for these bigger complexes that could have 10 tenants in a, on a parcel. I mean, that's just, it's not fair to not allow for them to have any kind of signage.
Just a point of clarification, right now, current ordinance allows six foot maximum general across the board, there are a couple limited circumstances allows the eight feet, correct?
Yes, only when you're within 300 feet of I-75.
Mr. Hoffman?
One, as far as I've been on here, and I've never heard anybody speak opposite of this, we want businesses to thrive here. I, so when we're discussing this, I want that to be noted, we do want businesses to thrive. The problem I have is, you know, you talked about it's not fair if there's 10 places. The only time I could think of that not being fair is if you have the skinniest situation and you have a straight, you know, and then the 10th one is, you know, a mile back in the back of the property. We talk about fair, I will tell you that in real estate, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, whoever's back there in 10th, guess what, they pay less to be back there than they do to be the front. So, I mean, to talk about fair, people, you also have choices. Hey, I want to have, be more visible, well, then don't buy the property that's in the back, you know, along those lines. I mean, you don't have, you're not forced to be in the back and not have any frontage on that. I also agree with the GPS of people understanding, hey, where to get to something. I am fearful a little bit, in the city, the Grand Mall has a very large, tall sign, we probably all remember that, at one time it just said the Grand Mall. It got hit by lightning and it sat there in disarray for a long time, big fights between the owner there and then the city about how they demanded and wanted, you know, all these different things along the signs. I will tell you that it's not the most pleasurable thing to look at, and I don't even know that it's really necessary because they're advertising everybody that you can see along the road. So you get, you can see them driving by and then they're, oh, we have to have this sign, it doesn't make sense to me that they have, but then again, it also isn't a distraction for me when I'm driving because of the location of it. I mean, it's not hindering my driving or anything, so it's not bothersome, I don't understand why they have to have it, but it's not bothersome. I would think that a sign that tall in other scenarios, maybe there's a crossroad right after the sign or something of that nature, there were, it could be. Something else that happens at that location is that the next property is down below, the Ace Hardware is down below, so if Ace Hardware happened to be on the same level of that sign, well, that sign might be hiding Ace Hardware. So it's tough for me to do a blanket, yeah, everybody can go up to 10 feet, where I can make scenarios where I don't think it's necessary, and I also don't think it's, you know, not fair, just because somebody chose to be in the last line someplace so they could save a buck on where they are and then come back and say, well, now I gotta have this. So I'm just, kind of things that are rattling around in my head.
And I just wanted to be, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that, because we're not, this isn't gonna be pole signs at 10 feet, still monument signs at 10 feet, just, that's the understanding you're with too, right? Okay.
Well, I, I will say that the problem with some of the monuments, some of these cars, you drive up to something, you can beat a 10 foot, and guess what, I can't see around that flipping sign.
Well, and that's why we have the 10 foot behind the right-of-way, every sign has to be 10 foot behind.
Try to read that when you're driving.
That, I think that would clear that up.
I could, I could point out another situation, and it's actually in the city again, it's actually right where my office is, and in the summer like this, there's signs, then there's the poles, then there's the trees when they fully have leaves on them, and then they've put nice decorative plants on the ground. Guess what, add all those three things together, it's a flipping wall. I cannot, I cannot go out that door, I mean, that exit, I have to turn around and go the other way, because you just can't see the traffic coming.
Sure.
Cannot do it.
Right, and I, and I understand that, and I just know that anytime somebody brings a permit, all of that has to be put on there, and that's something that I look at, so that if there's blockage and things like that, that's all taken into consideration, just so you're aware. I, I understand your point though, 100%.
I think?
Well, and that's where variances, I mean, in this case, are, there's an avenue for variances.
And I guess motion would be?
Ms. Colter, did you have something?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I was chatting with her.
Mr. Andre?
So I, when I read, when I read the introduction, the way I went to it is I thought of multi-tenant, I think you had that in there, but then when I go to the chart, it doesn't really describe multi-tenant in that, right, in that capacity, right? So when I thought of multi-tenant, I thought of, just as you had mentioned, I started chicken scratching, multi-tenant, what a, what a sign would be. I have done this type of signage in many different developments and it's pretty fairly common. It really, I think it centralizes the signage and the directional and it brings it to it, because I think, especially when you have multi-tenant, as opposed to a single user, the multi-tenant, there's, there's a little bit of space in order to get your brand out there, branding is becoming more and more important, logos and branding, and so I think the signage, while not as far as a directional location, because we can all use the GPS to get there directionally, it's a little bit more of a branding to set you apart as to where you're located, because a lot of times, they might be co-locating with a lot of the same different businesses. So if you have three different automotive companies all locating within this location, how do you disseminate yourself from those other two? It's your branding, it's that little bit of signage that's there, as opposed to, it's just there for directional purposes. So I, I think the idea of multi-tenant in that capacity is, is a good thing, okay? I, very frankly, I think 10 feet's too high though. I think eight foot is very appropriate for a multi-tenant development, which, which I've had many of, and when I read this, I think I want to read this correctly, please walk me through this, and the way it's set up right now is it's a half square foot per linear foot of frontage, right? So if you have 100 foot of frontage, half foot is 50 square feet, your sign is just 50 square feet. If you have 500 feet of frontage, a half foot would be 250, but you're still maxing it out at 75, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so there is a, there's an inherent cap that's built in already within that calculation, is that correct? Okay, so I, I, I think if it's more structured towards, and you're specific to multi-tenant, I like that idea better, because that's, if that's what the intent of what the amendment would be? Because that's, if that's what the intent of what the amendment would be, I would support that, you know, for those reasons I'm talking about. Because then all of a sudden, just because they have 500 foot of frontage, they don't have a massive sign. It's still going to be contained within this area. But I do think 10 feet is, is too high. I'd be very challenged for somebody to come and try to get a variance based on hardship or 10-foot sign. I mean, even a multi-tenant, 8 foot is very, I think, appropriate.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jeremy.
Just taking a quick poll of the board, is anybody opposed to the square footage amendment up to 150 square feet? Is it, is it just a height issue? Would you concede from 10 to 8 but still keep the 150? With it still being 10 foot behind the right-of-way, keep that in mind.
150 feet for?
Square foot for the sign.
Or is it just anybody?
The whole, the, this whole thing, and I think the whole intent was for multi-tenant. So that, going back to Mr. Andre's point is, that's going to be built into it, yes? So that's something that we're going to add in there. So keep that in mind as we're talking about this further now. Everything's going to be multi-tenant. So if you concede from 10 to 8, would you be okay with keeping the 150 square feet?
Multi-tenant.
For multi-tenant only.
Personally, I would.
And I do want to make a point of clarification. We might need to look into that, the multi-tenant term, because obviously there's Supreme Court case rules on what we can regulate. So it might, it might actually look something more like multi-frame or multi-case or something along those lines, where we're actually regulating a physical parameter rather than like a business, business term. Because I wouldn't, we can't regulate like, you know, what's exactly going in, in each frame. But we could, to my knowledge, you could regulate the frame size within that 150 square feet. So we just, we might be able to say multi-tenant. I just want to do some research there.
I was going to say that's, go ahead.
Mr. Bush? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if we do that, what's to say in existing multi-tenant building, every one of them in the township come and change their signage? All of them. Everything we've got in the township that has small signs.
This is for DDA district though. It would be specific, this is, is that correct? This amendment will only be for DDA district, so.
But. When you allow one place, sorry, Mr. Chairman, when you allow one, hey, I want that. And they will. May, may I continue with that though? The, the other is, would there be, you would think that the more multi-tenants there are, if there's three multi-tenants, you probably don't need 150 square foot. You can put a big enough sign for each one of those things, you know. If you have 100 multi-tenants, now all of a sudden 150 square foot, doesn't make any sense at all, right? Because they would all be too small.
Yeah.
The other thing, I mean, I'm not trying to muddy the water, but the other thing is, is what's the speed limit going by where you are? I mean, if you're at 55 miles an hour and you have five tenants, then you could probably be big enough and you can read that fast enough. But if you're in 25 mile an hour, you might not need to be, the sign need to be as big and if you have more tenants or less tenants. So that's something else that I would probably pay attention to.
So if I may clarify, we do have regulations in the ordinance that the lettering needs to be at least eight inches when it's 40 miles per hour or more.
Which Baldwin Road, which is predominantly where the DDA district is, Baldwin and Holly Road, they're all, it's 50 or 55 through there, so.
And do you have also the idea of how many multi-tenants? And then again, for me, you know, are they all strung across this way? Because if they're all strung across this way, a monument sign down here, when your parcel is way on the other side, doesn't make sense when you might have a cut-through on that side. I would see more of a need of a multi if, if it's going to be deep.
They'll still have a building sign.
You could, yeah.
And like in the city, why do you have a big monument sign and a, and a face sign right next to each other? In fact, don't we say you can't do?
You can do both.
But they're limited on the signage of each one or?
Based on the frontage.
Based on the, right, okay.
Mr. Smith?
So I'm wondering, this is just, I'm just shooting from the hip here, if there was a graduated scale with the number of tenants and square footage. So if you had 10 or less or five, whatever, Andy and I, and if we have any suggestions from the board, what, what we could do, maybe a graduated scale could, I don't think we'll ever get 100 tenants. Maybe Tech Village might end up getting 100 tenants in there, we don't know. But would a graduated scale saying, you know, up to 10, 20, you know, they get more square, square footage as the tenants go up?
And the number of tenants.
The number of tenants go up, the number of entrances or doors or whatever we consider as the, a tenant space, leasable space or however we want to call it, it may not be leased either, but I know that's something Andy and I and Jill have to sit down and talk about.
And cap at 150 though? Because I think, I think there's some concern about total size. So would we cap that at 150 to a graduate?
Yep, could be smaller. Maybe it's 100 if you only have three tenants or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, that's kind of, that's my point is if it was.
So I guess my question would be is, when you say tenant, are you referring to the actual lease that's taking place? Or how are you sizing the sign based on a rental?
And that's, and that's why I don't know if we can even do that. I think we might just have to say by frame, by frame divisions or something along those lines. Because I don't think, I don't think we can say who is going to be occupying any given frame that's a part of that 150 square foot calculation.
Whatever the Supreme Court's doing. I, I could have a building that will take, you know, 15 tenants. And if I only leased the three.
Yep.
Now I can adjust my sign.
Exactly.
At least the four, then I have to readjust my sign and then.
People are going to redo the sign.
Yeah, and we could, yeah, and we could have some frame regulations where like no, you know, the frame can adjust. No single frame can exceed 100 square foot, but must be at least 20, something along those lines.
It seems very, very complicated and overdone.
I agree. Another comment. I'm not really in favor of having special rules for businesses in the Downtown Development Authority. Because I really, I think all the businesses in commercial or industrial or whatever ought to be treated the same and not have special, presumably more favorable rules just because you're, happen to be in the Downtown Development Authority District. I know that's something we're promoting, you know, but frankly, I don't think this is going to be a deal breaker for any business that is thinking of locating in Grand Blank Township, you know, how big the signs can be. So that's why I have some real concerns about this proposed amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Yancey?
Just to, well, I will more complicate the situation when you talk about a gradual scale. What about a gradual scale that included the amount of frontage on, on the property? And also that you could graduate to 20 feet setback for a larger sign? If your frontage allowed for that particular increase in size.
I'd say that's, that, those are all viable options, just the extended setback. If square footage got higher, I mean, that, but then now you're pulling it off the road. I mean, it's already 10 foot behind the right-of-way and down Baldwin Road, it's already, I think, a 60-foot right-of-way or more.
But if you have a 300-foot frontage, then 20 foot may not be unacceptable.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Jeremy, do you know the inventory of lots we have in that district?
How many we have?
Yeah, just to ballpark.
You're allowed to say no. Just, if the board could give me a minute, I've got the, I've got a map in this other room, I can give you a quick count. I mean, it's anywhere from, like I said, Tech Village is, we don't know what that's going to get carved into. But as it sits today, probably between 30 and 50 lots. But a lot of those are, some of those are residential lots that are going to get, that we, the future land use map now shows that they're going to be neighborhood commercial, they can be neighborhood commercial going in the future. So a lot of those will probably get combined together and that number is going to get shortened, so.
Thank you.
I was going to go down your own. Very small number of parcels that we have to be worried about here. Sounds like BZAs, I mean, to me, because I think, I, excuse me, Mr. Hoppin. So I, I, I think that if we're pretty reasonable here, if they, if an applicant comes in and says, look, I got this great parcel. I need five more feet or I need one more foot, I think that's what the BZA is there for. I think we've proven that our zoning variance board does do those things. And so, yeah, that does make sense in this case because of this geography and this and that and things of that nature. You know, if, if we would have had, if our BZA would have had a track record of saying no every single time somebody asked to work outside of the box, I would be more concerned about having this flexibility given to this view. They don't. They have given variances.
I'm on that board.
Yeah?
I'm on that board and it's a tough board.
Just FYI, we haven't had a ZBA meeting in a year.
Right.
Because of the modifications that we're making here today. So that's, there's, like Mr. Andre said, that you're going to be hard pressed to get a justification for hardship or practical difficulty for a sign when you have X amount of frontage and X amount of square footage on your.
Well, if they don't need it, then why are we granting it?
For the DDA parcels because they're a separate entity.
Okay, all right.
I guess my comment is I don't think we're ready to have something next month to go for a public hearing. And whether we buy some, based on the comments you've heard here, we can have some additional discussion.
Yes, yep, yep.
See where it goes.
Yep.
Moving on, next item would be committee report. Do you have township board?
I don't have anything to report.
Zoning Board of Appeals? Nothing?
Nothing.
Well, we had a meeting just to elect officers. That was the only reason we had held the meeting.
Site plan, site plan review, we did see a preliminary site plan for, what is it, Tribe Park?
Tribe Park, yep.
Tribe, right at the end, for a business. We asked them to revise and resubmit, come back, basically because they were talking about a lot of changes that they want to make to the plan. So they said, okay, let's document it in the plan. And they're expecting to get those back to us in a couple of weeks, it sounded like.
Might be.
I actually heard next Tuesday.
I was going to say, I heard a couple of days. Oh, by the way, Mr. Andre.
Sorry there, Mr. Andre.
Expect a phone call.
We're thinking Monday. Yeah, Monday, huh?
If you haven't received a phone call, you're going to be getting one very shortly. Yeah.
What they were describing they want to do versus what was on the plans didn't match up. When those plans were submitted versus this latest thinking, so we ask them to. So that's something that we've seen.
Two things, I'd like, the two changes that we discussed, we need to have a vote on that to make that official. The change for October 5th to October 12th and then the November 2nd to the November 9th. I need, I would like.
Motion to approve them, those dates.
You okay with one?
One's fine.
We got a motion by Mr. Bush to change the, basically move the October, November meetings back one, one week.
Correct. Same time, just back one week.
Motion by Mr. Bush, support by Mr. Johnson. All right, any other discussion? If not, a vote is in order. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes 8-0.
Mr. Chairman, I got one other thing.
Okay.
Last few months, there was discussion if I did any admin reviews, this board would like to hear about them. The last couple of weeks, I did one for Heatherwood Apartments. They did a landscaping change. They had a lot of plants that were dying off around their buildings. So they basically revised their landscaping plan and submitted to me and I approved that. And then the next one, I don't have everything yet, just yet, but I should have in the next couple of days. But Grand Blank Nissan on Holly Road, they're expanding their parking lot towards that industrial drive to the north. So they're adding some parking spaces over there. They're staying out of the wetland that was already looked at. Row looked at it as well. They'll have to submit that one to Genesee County for stormwater. And Eagle probably too, within so many feet of that detention area there too. So with that, I did that as an admin review as well.
Will that include, pardon me, would that include an area for unloading the car haulers coming to deliver vehicles? I think they're one of the ones that stop in the middle of Holly Road to unload.
I wasn't aware of that, but I can, I will double check that. I think it was just parking for cars. I don't think there was an unloading spot.
If they're asking for something.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Mr. Hoppin?
So I've done some rearranging on landscaping at my home from time to time. And when something doesn't grow, I cut it down. And that's how I changed the landscaping. Did they change what their landscape or, or, you know, different plants or irrigation or?
Yes, they've redone more hardier plants. And they've moved things and spread them out so they're not as condensed. Basically, a lot of it was the ones around all of their AC units were the ones that were kind of dying off. I don't think there was enough spreading with the heat. I think they were, they were getting killed off. So they've moved things, they still have the, the height, they're changing them. So they're still going to block the AC units, they're just changing the plant types.
Did they come to you and say, this is what we're doing?
They said, what do you think? What do you need to see? And I looked through it and it.
Next time you chat with them, I really appreciate them doing that because there's a lot of businesses that do it, like I'm chopping down, be done and just walk away. And that's very.
Right. And just so you know, and I, and I'm, and I think I've mentioned this before, I have control over code enforcement now. So if you see anything that doesn't look like it's supposed to, Mr. Bush and I have discussed a few other sites where the landscaping has been removed and hasn't been replaced and we're working on those, those issues, but.
I think that was very good of that business doing that and taking upon themselves to say, we want to improve and run it by. So I'm thankful for them doing that.
Yeah, and it was probably 20 different buildings. So it wasn't just, if it was just one, we probably would have just, no big deal, mark it up, send me an email, tell me what you're doing, no big deal. But now that they're doing 20 and they're basically doing five different floor plans or five different building plans. So they sent me five different plans showing all, I mean, just like the landscape detail that we get in any site plan. They gave me all the details, labeled everything. I was very impressed with, with it, so.
Good on them.
What will we see regarding plans for the new plant coming in, the hydrogen plant?
So it's not a hydrogen plant, they do the fuel cells.
Storage, storage of hydrogen, I guess.
They just make the cells. There's not, there's going to be very little hydrogen on site. They'll use it for testing and quality control. But I've, we've had meetings with them. I have not, no site plans have hit my desk yet. I don't even have word of when we're going to see them. So if they don't get something to me by the first of October, and we may not see these plans until, this will be something that goes for the full site plan because there's going to be special land uses and things like that. So this will be a full site plan, site plan review.
One question.
Mr. Andre?
So for the, just for, real quick, for the parking lot, with, was the car dealership itself, was that a permitted use or was that a special use? By going back.
Automobile sales new is a special land use in general.
So anything, any modification that they make to that, is that a special land use change then?
The, they're not changing the use, they're changing the, the, basically the accessory use, which is the storage of cars, amending their site plans. So they're not, so it's still automotive sales.
So can you put conditions upon it then? Yes. Beyond, beyond what I'm saying is beyond the use of just that parking, the entire site can have conditions on it, right? Because I think the, the, the car hauler in the road would be a condition.
Yeah, yes, that'll be something that I can, yes.
On, from, you know, from a code enforcement side. So I would, I would, you know, I would support putting a condition onto that.
Okay, yep.
I agree 100%.
Good comment.
Speaking of semi-trucks.